...
It's been now called the order. Roll call, call Matt Carter.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Bell. Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bowden. Trustee McMoone.
Present.
And Mayor Rudace.
Here. Uh, so I can make up the leaders of the pageant, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. Visitors are always welcome to all public meetings of the Board of Trustees. Comment on an issue. Persons wishing to speak will be called upon by the mayor during section four general public. The interested party will stand, identify themselves, and make their comment. In order to give proper consideration to all items on this agenda, the mayor will limit participants in a debate and will close off protracted, repetitive, irrelevant, or abusive remarks. Public comments will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. Thank you. First one to start off?
Good evening to Mayor Rudace, village clerk, board of trustees, head of the town, village manager. Good evening to Mayor Rudace, to our village clerk, board of trustees, uh, village manager, treasurer, village department heads, to all of the residents and guests. I am so grateful to be here tonight, standing before you, to just say thank you. Thank you for all that you're doing and working together and getting it done. A special thank you to Trustee Franklin for the cleanup at Craig Park. I really appreciate that. Thank you to Trustee Jenkins-Bell for the Dad's Cook Two event and for all of those who worked with you to make that happen. It was a wonderful event. Uh, thank you to the trustees who are, uh, hitting the ground running with our mayor. I really appreciate that. Uh, it just gives us a good look. I just like the way you're looking up there and, and working together. Um, thank you Mayor Rudace for how you brought us together in handling this water situation. Uh, that's what I call hitting the ground running. Uh, you know, I am so grateful to all of the residents, to you. I say thank you to all of the residents because we have come together to stand together in the midst of our trials and tribulations. This is not an easy thing. We all have our stories. Uh, thank you to Pastor Reggie Williams and to Pastor Moses Herring for the, uh, hosting the event on last night at First Baptist Church. Because this is what's needed in a community when you're experiencing trauma. Uh, to just have the opportunity to talk about it, uh, to express your fears and your concerns. It's very much needed. So I'm appreciating all of the residents and all of you and all of your efforts. I say thank you.
Thank you, love. Keith Griffin?
Good evening, everyone. I also want to echo the same as Ms. Lawson. I want to thank Ms. Jenkins and, um, and Ms. Trust for the Father's Day cookout. It was a beautiful event, well, well attended. I also want to thank Mr. Franklin. I really do. I've always appreciated you, even before you got to be trustee, how you hound and take care of our young people. I appreciate it. Also want to thank the board, the members who were there. I'm not talking about for the meeting, the grandstand. I'm talking about the ones that came out during the week and met with the residents before the meeting. Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Williams, Mr. Franklin, and Ms. Bowden. I appreciate that. That's what the people need. Also want to thank you, Mr. Rudace, for following through. You know, you and I met with Mr. Blanchard, uh, whatever, I can't remember. Craig Blanchard, uh, many a times. We would talk over in the corner. It wasn't no private meeting. It was just after the board meeting was over, whether we don't talk to him. He had a whole different attitude Saturday than he had with us before. How he would talk to us and how we, the things he would say. I appreciate that and I appreciate the trustees for coming out. I appreciate you for following through because the last administration talked a good game, but they never followed through. Good job.
Amy Ann Nickerson?
Good evening. Good evening, board. Um, as, uh, Mayor Rudace said, my name is Amy Ann Nickerson. I'm with, uh, MB, my name's Jurg, and I'm here to talk about, um, a few things. Um, I know a few of you all. I haven't had the pleasure to meet everyone. I look forward to doing so. Um, Rudace, Mayor Rudace, uh, haven't had the opportunity to get in front of you since I used to coach your kids literally, Justin and, uh, Jake. So it's good to see you in a position I've known you for so many, many years. So it's good to see you in your position. Um, but I'm, I'm here to talk about a resolution that was passed on May fourteenth with my company, with the Village University Park. Uh, that resolution was passed unanimously, uh, for, uh, the, uh, take care of the abandoned homes to redevelopment, and now the development of the abandoned homes and, uh, the life data homes in University Park. And so since that, that time, my company has, uh, reached out to the village several times to have that, uh, resolution executed, and it has not. And so based upon the state law, uh, we understand that fourteen days after it is, uh, a resolution is passed, that it must be signed. Uh, but several attempts to reach out to the mayor's office and to the city clerk, um, we haven't gotten anywhere. And, um, on June fourth, my, my attorney reached out, uh, basically a demand letter that was sent out to the village manager to have a conversation about this resolution and why it's not actually being, um, executed with the, with the office of the, of the mayor. So, um, now, this evening, it's on the agenda that you plan to rescind this resolution that was passed unanimously by the board. Um, so that baffles me. I don't understand why that's the case. Obviously, we've had communication, but I've had no clear understanding of why that's taking place, especially with all that's going on right now in the village, that the village is dealing with right now. It's just, that's just one less thing to have to worry about, you know? Uh, that it's a willful neglect to execute a resolution that was passed by the board. And that's something that the village should not have any type of practices. If the board approves on something, then it needs to be followed through. Okay? So, um, I don't want to take too much time. I'm sure you will, obviously you all are going to get to this later, uh, because you put it on the agenda to rescind it. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that the public knew and everyone here knew, even the trustees, that, uh, the newer trustees, uh, who did not hold on that at the time. Excuse me, sir. They know that. Your time is up. All right.
Craig Blanchard.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I want to start by thanking you for the opportunity on Saturday to come and speak to the public and, uh, conduct the forum to answer questions and provide information on Saturday. Thank you for that. Um, your goal was to come here and provide the latest information and some fact-based testimony with the safety of the residents of University Park is our top priority. And I wanted to renew my commitment, uh, to keep the lines of communication open with the village of University Park and to maintain complete transparency. I wanted to just provide a real quick overview of things we've done and some of the things we're going to do. So some of this is going to be a little bit repetitive, but there may be folks here that don't have that information, so I'd like to have the time to do it if I can. So first, uh, we've delivered already about eighteen thousand cases of bottled water to our customers in town, homes and businesses. That happened as recently as today. And the clean sweep of the town, we can hand it out, I think another three thousand cases of water. Uh, and we've hired a local minority-owned business to help us with that effort, and we're glad to have their help. And I wanted to bring that, make that, um, point really clear because some of the media sources, um, are providing information that says we're no longer providing water, and we are every day. So I just want to ensure that you know that. That's what's important to me. Uh, if customers, um, that have ever been under the do not consume, uh, they're going to have a zero charge this month on their bill, they'll be getting those bills probably this week, and they'll say zero on their bill, have an explanation of why they have a zero bill this month. We're also providing the village with the testing results for our biannual testing, as well as providing the village and our customers through our website, monthly updates on the testing that we're doing with our compliance samples. So those will be sent to you every Monday along with a bar chart like the gentleman had here on, um, on Saturday that shows a summary of it for you, okay? Um, we also continue to hand out water pitchers here at Ninety Town Center, our information center. Those are available to everybody inside the impacted area, and we've delivered most of them. And those that haven't got one, they're still available here if somebody has not received them. Again, water testing we're offering, if folks want to sign up for that, they can work the website, they can call. They can also, um, get free lead testing here, a packet at the community center or the Ninety Town Center, get a packet that talks about the lead testing in the home and the blood and the water. And, um, with your permission, if it's okay, we'd like to extend the, uh, time here for the benefit of the residents to July sixth. So if you could let me know, uh, it's not urgent tonight, but if you could let me know, we've talked before about voting July first, and we'd like to provide the opportunity for folks to bring that information back, have more time to review it, and bring it back by July sixth. So if someone, if you just let me know, that'd be all right. The information I'd like to share that's new tonight is that we've ordered, uh, offered faucet filters. We talked about this last night at the church, uh, the First Baptist Church, we were there. And so we're ordering, um, faucet filters from Pure that you can put right on your faucet in your kitchen, and you can open up your faucet and get the water outlet free, okay? And so we're going to have those available here for pickup. We have a table here to display it and have it so people can come in and see how to install. You just screw it on your tab and see how to use it. We're going to have those available starting on Thursday. And with that, it would address some of the concerns we also heard the other day, of the day on Saturday, and also just some of the concerns I heard last night about people want to wash their, like, fruit and stuff. Well, they'll be able to do it with this in their sink. They won't have to brush your teeth with a bottle, okay? And so those will be available here on Thursday. People can come up and pick them up and, um, see how to install them. And with that, uh, I just want to assure you that we're continuing to work diligently. Melissa and I are going back to work tonight after we're done with this to ensure that we're doing everything we possibly can to eliminate the remaining folks on us do not consume from this, from this advisory. And, um, we'll continue to work diligently to do so. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Craig. Oh, trustee?
Trustee Shirley Bowden. You may have said, um, uh, who are the, uh, faucet filters? When would they be available? You may have said that.
Thursday. They'll be available Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Yeah, we ordered them and, um, they're going to, we actually went to go get them. We drove, go get them ourselves. So they should be here for Thursday morning when we open up, uh, operations at ten a.m.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
What question?
Uh, for the filters, if there are residents that are not able to get up here to pick the filters up, um, can I take leadership on, uh, ensuring that they're, uh, delivered to the, to the residents?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, we know there's some folks that may be homebound or something, and we want to work, um, to ensure that they get them too, where everybody needs to get them.
Okay. All right. Just want to say thank you for your efforts. Uh, I have been on the ground actually delivering water myself out of the palace that you guys have been bringing in, so thanks for the efforts.
Yesterday, Greg, I, I took the initiative to have my blood drawn yesterday at the hospital. And I used, I used my own, uh, insurance company to, uh, utilize that, uh, that blood draw last night. So, um, I'm waiting on the results. So my daughter that I had mentioned about, uh, that was pregnant, that's, that's seven weeks pregnant. So how does she go about getting that blood, um, taken care of too, without using insurance? What is the step?
Yeah, she could come here and get a packet, but we'll bring her a packet. Melissa or I'll bring her a packet if she can't get up here, but she can come here and get a packet. There's information in there. Read it all, take it home with her. We're going to, we're going to extend to July sixth. They can come back even by July sixth, and they can have it filled out. And then we'll make sure she gets a blood test, a water test, and the in-home test. If she's going to have a baby, she wants it inside her home, it's safe too. So, uh, but the information will be up here available.
Cause I did, I did, uh, take the sample yesterday from the home, and I put it on the, um, my daughter put it on the porch on the step, and I, I guess somebody picked it up yesterday.
Okay. Well, they should be calling you then. It takes a little bit to get the results, but they'll be calling you with the results, and they call everybody back with the results.
So she needs to come up here with it to get the package though, right?
Yeah, or if you let me know, we'll get it to them. We'll probably get it to her. You just let us know, right? I want to make it easy.
Thank you.
Uh, and then the other thing too is I did confirm that the fire department, police department, they tested, no detect, but what EPA tells us, we can take them off the do not consume. Uh, we still have to officially get them on the do not consume, and we're working on that. But so you know, we did the test, there was no detect, okay? And I think somebody asked that on, on Saturday.
Just one more, uh, issue. I, uh, I got my call today from Aqua and saying that my, because they done the testing already and notified me that mine was still at a high level, do not consume, to come back up here and, um, to get, uh, tested again, because evidently mine is steady, right?
Well, we're going to be providing the results, uh, every week, and so we'll be able to see that chart that he had, and we'll see it improve over time. We thought it might take a few weeks for this treatment to do what it needs to do. So I understand it's frustrating and concerning, um, but I think with time it will work.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Very important. Mayor Trust?
Good evening to the mayor and the, and the board and the residents, uh, here in the audience. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, thank, uh, you guys for the way you handled this. This room was really full on Saturday, and, uh, it was done very, very well. And I'm coming up here tonight to thank Ms. Deborah Stroud because she was there when we needed her. She jumped out there and, uh, was able to procure, uh, some extra water for us too as well. Uh, she is a member of the, uh, Community Block Club, but that's the kind of person she is. And, uh, she's been around here a long time, so, uh, I wanted to publicly thank her.
Thank you, Mrs. Trustee. Thank you, Mrs. Stroud, for all the water you got from the food bank.
And Public Works Department as well.
Mary Morell?
Good evening, Mayor, Board, and all the village trustees. I came to say thank you. The village is just simply much better. The shrubs, the grass, everything is better. Uh, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Harvey Dodd?
I didn't say nothing, but I will say something. Okay, first of all, to the village board, I am very happy. I've been out here quite some time, and I do see a lot of progress. I just hope we can keep it up. We still have a way to go, but I'm sure with the direction that I see up here, we can get there. I want to thank you all for your commitment. I feel very comfortable with what's going on with the waters. I'm not happy with it, but I feel like you guys are doing the best that you could do, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Dodd.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing this evening?
I think that mic button came down. My mic, my mic.
Can everyone hear me?
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing this evening? Let's have smiles on our faces. We've been having water to drink. Isn't that a blessing? Didn't come out of our faucets, but we had it. Uh, thank you, Mayor Trust, because it is my pleasure to do for anybody anything I can do in this community. So, Mr. Frank, Trustee Franklin, I'm sorry. Um, during the day, I have more time than so many other people do, and my time I can gauge. Today, I went over to Villa Town and picked up the water that came from, I believe, Jules. Thank you. Uh, cause I know some people didn't know that the oven water came from Northern Illinois Food Bank, but that's my, my people.
Thanks again.
Not wrong. Um, I picked up water today, and I took it to a lot of older residents. And forgive me, no matter how new technology is, older residents don't have computers, they don't do Facebook, and some of them don't do next door. So it's by word of mouth, and, um, I don't have a problem picking up water. If I'm available, I would gladly take it to residents like I've been doing today. One hand or not, I'm willing to do whatever I can do. And I must say, not just thank you to the officials, but thank you to the residents that came out on Saturday who exemplified such a beautiful decorum. With the issue that we're all dealing with, we could... Oh, okay. One thing, we got to give ourselves a pat on the back because we have been diligent, we've been resilient, and we behaved in a very good manner, and we're going to keep it up. Thank you.
Thanks again, Mrs. Stroud. Gina Williams?
Good evening, everyone, and praise God for all our blessings flow. Um, I certainly appreciate the Aqua personnel that has been here. I work for a large company like that, and our president would be nowhere be found whenever we got into a problem. So for this man to be here and hit the ground running, I do appreciate that. I know Aqua brought us to this, but God will bring us through this. I also want to, um, hit on when we're going to ever get the final budget reading because I think we shouldn't still be spending money till we know what we have in our pockets. Also, I would like to hear the recon report. Trustee Williams, you went. It would be nice to hear what happened there, what companies you all met with. Is anybody coming to our village? I don't want to get away from the business part of things, so I would like to hear that. I also want to thank, uh, Trustee Franklin for always going above and beyond duty. Um, since accolades were going around, I do want to say the last two years of the former board put together a great team and that there were restaurants that are still coming, renovation to this town center, and this young man here, my heart goes out to him because I was there when Pastor Taylor, Corey Carter, and Amen were approved unanimously for those things. So he wanted to bring renovation, and he wanted to help us with these vacated homes, which our eyes saw, so to see something being rescinded, I smell, it doesn't smell good. So I want to see his project move forward, and I don't want to hear about some, you know, whatever is trying to be done to do away with it. Uh-uh, no, that's not it. So I just want to thank everyone. Again, village manager, you're outstanding, you always go to bat for us, and I don't think we get enough praise, but thank you too, and thank God.
New business, first, second, and third reading in order is amending part ten, title six, chapter ten sixty, section ten sixty nine nine of the Village of University Park Code of Orders. Is there a motion? So moved? Trustee, uh, Trustee Brooks, second by, Trustee Williams. Questions? Roll call, Matt Carter.
Trustee Williams. Aye. Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden. Trustee Bowden.
Both aye.
Trustee McMoone.
Both aye.
And Mayor Rudace.
I concur.
Mr. Mayor, that's ordinance twenty nineteen dash nineteen.
Thank you, Matt Carter. I have F two C, first, second, and third reading in order is amending part six, chapter six seventy-four of the Village of University Park Code of Orders. Is there a motion? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Trustee Brooks, second by Trustee Williams. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Williams. Both aye. Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee McMoone.
Both aye.
Mayor Rudace.
Both aye.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's ordinance O twenty nineteen dash one.
I have F two C, first, second, and third reading in order is amending part two, title eight, chapter two ninety-two of the Village of University Park Code of Orders. Is there a motion?
I believe Mayor.
Moved by Trustee Brooks. Second by Trustee Bowden. Question?
Yeah, Mayor, um, I, I, I understand, um, what you're trying to do with, um, this ordinance. I kind of would have preferred it to be in the meaning of the whole so that all the trustees would have had an opportunity to, um, discuss it because, um, there, there are a couple of things in here that I think would seem one-sided, although this is, this would eliminate the special events, the hu, in special events in Human Services Committee members as is. Um, I kind of would like to, as being a past volunteer of this village and a chair of the board, uh, of the Police and Fire Commission, I understand that when it come to elections and the change of the guard, that there are residents who will participate more and some who will participate less on committees. But, um, I still feel that in that sense that, um, we all should learn to integrate and work together and that, uh, everyone at least that's on that Human Services Special Events Committee, because it's actually more of the board, uh, the mayor and the board of trustees. I mean, this would seem more of something that Chicago would have when you have the mayor's office or Special Events Committee. And I just think this, if anything, Mayor, we should at least have a discussion at, at a meeting of the whole. I, I understand your goal and what you want to do, um, but I would like to see at least a committee that's already in place kind of move forward.
Well, Trustee, great question.
Well, trustee, great questions, great understanding. I mean, you had the opportunity to call, but I would ask you to support this. If those people can still serve on this committee, no problem whatsoever, and we need to move forward because their big event's gonna be planned for the future. This committee will not cost the village any money, and they have the opportunity to receive outside funds to, you know, perform functions in the village. Nobody's eliminated. They're all welcome, and we cannot always continue to that. Give me the opportunity as the mayor to move things forward. People want something different, let's do something different. It's open to everybody. It's inclusive.
Well, well, Mary, it does say in section three appointments, the appointments pertaining to all current members of the Human Service and Human Service and Events Committee are hereby terminated effective immediately. We have, we have people here that really still want to serve, serve you as mayor. Yeah, but their terms is based upon this, their terms is being, you know...
Actually, in reality, their terms end with the term of last mayor, in reality.
Huh?
Yeah.
What ordinance would that follow, now?
That state statute.
State statute? Oh...
Well, I'm not here for debate. I mean, I want you to support it. That's, that's your opinion. They're able to come on to the Special Events Committee if they choose to. It's not complicated.
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand, Mayor. I'm just saying that, but let me go back about their terms in under the mayors. The only, only, even, the only, only time that would apply would be more like if you have directors and managers. I don't think it would be in reference to volunteers, because if we have a, a police and fire commissioner that was actually appointed and which being the chair, I know you can't appoint anyone ninety days before the change, or excuse me, thirty days before of a new mayor, but if that person was appointed, they stay in that seat those three years of that mayor. So, if I'm not mistaken, that would be the same as those who are under other committees that were formed in the past.
No, let me, let me be clear, trustee. Committees and commissions are two different things. Commissions are officially recognized, committees are voluntary. And just for clarity, let's get some legal qualification, because you want to make these things complicated. We can't continue to stagnate progress.
You're empowered to do that as the board asks so asks. It's not an individual thing, it's a committee itself.
Right.
And you're empowered to do that by action, the board.
Please be, let me say it. I don't know what he just said.
The board can act to eliminate a committee. And activate a new one. The mayor is not, is not doing it on his own. He's asking the board to adopt an ordinance that will do that, and then he can do that. He's not doing it. The board would be doing it if the board passes the motion. Got to be up to the board, though.
Mayor, I, I yield my time. This, this wasn't a debate. I was just out of clarity. And, and let's, let's, I'm gonna tell you like I told the last mayor. Don't do that. Don't ever put words in my mouth. I've never divided. I've always been down the middle. I'll tell you like I tell Mayor Covington.
I'm not Mayor Covington.
Well, you're Mayor Rudes, and I'm telling you, please don't do that, Mayor. I respect you, but please don't do that.
Very good. Questions? You had an order, young man.
So, I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding. So, in essence, the members of the previous committees, they'll have, they will have an opportunity to be a part of the committee. Is that correct?
Yep, that's, that's true.
So, so, in essence, is it just a name change to the committee that we're saying?
Basically.
Okay, so, in the process of members to join that committee, they'll, they'll have the opportunity to join, but it'll be under a different name. Is that correct?
That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Trustee Brooks.
Mayor, I want a clarification. Trustee Franklin, the, what my point was is that I don't have a problem with the mayor just changing the name of a committee, but we already have a committee that's called the Human Service Special Events Committee. But the problem that we have right now, that those active members, is that all of the, all the committee, those people on the committee, their terms are terminated. Also, we have not even appointed liaisons to the present committees that we have. I'm still waiting for the liaison to this committee, the liaison to the finance committee. That's all my point is. It is no different, but we also need to be concerned about those residents who are already serving, and they're just waiting for direction of the liaison or the chair of the Human and Service Special Events Committee to call a meeting in order for this committee to keep moving. That's my point.
Trustee Bowden.
Those are my concerns as well. I have noted here. And I wanted to know why wasn't it being terminated, but I've been on further. But the members that are on it now, they're being terminated? And then my other question was, have they been notified that they're being terminated? Terminated from this position?
No, no.
Will they be notified?
Yeah, I mean, they'll just come right on over to the next committee, because see, that's a committee that was dependent on village's money.
It was what, sir?
It was dependent on village's money.
I don't understand.
They got a line item in the budget for money from the Village of University Park. It was funded by the village. And that's the difference.
Listeners, take the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
We're both on the special.
Both aye.
Both aye.
Trustee Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Both no.
Trustee Mike Muller.
Both no.
Mayor Rude.
Both aye.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance passes. That's ordinance 2019 dash 24.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. F2B, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement by and between the Village of University Park and JMA Architects for certain services. Could turn you to the town hall at Town Center Project.
So, moved.
Moved by trustee Jenkins.
Second.
Second by trustee Brooks. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee Mike Muller.
Aye.
And Mayor Rude.
Both aye.
Mr. Mayor, that's resolution O2019 dash 14.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item F2, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement by and between the Village of University Park and JMA Architects for the assessment and feasibility for the renovation of village's own facilities.
So, moved.
Moved by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Bowden. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye for progress.
Trustee Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden.
Aye.
Trustee Mike Muller.
Both aye.
And you.
Both aye.
Mr. Mayor, that's resolution 2019 dash 610.
Motion, F2, motion to rescind resolution R2019 dash 12, a resolution authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of University Park, Will, and Cook County, Illinois, and the MB Financial Group for the redevelopment of vacant abandoned residential property. Is there a motion?
I'm voting.
May I be recognized, Mayor?
I checked, trustee. Moved by trustee Bell, second. Second by trustee Williams. Questions? I'm sorry, trustee.
I do believe when this was passed, it was a seven whole vote, and I think the brain trust of the last administration and the, and the three, three trustees that are here now, they voted yes for this particular ordinance. It should go through because it's a done deal, if you ask me, because we voted seven to zero to pass this, and we're looking for the vote to say yes to this. This is a wonderful project. It's a project that we owe him nothing. He's gonna do what he can to beautify this village, and that's what this company is all about. And I really think that he should be given the opportunity, because we sit here just like he's sitting here right now, and with our brain trust that we have in the last board, we unanimously, unanimously accepted his offer. So, I think it should go right now.
Point, point, point well taken, trustee. And, and, and do you know what the problem is in reality? We've asked that this be tabled until the new board can come in and look at it and receive it. This was, one question, now, one, give me a second, please. This happened five minutes before the sworn in of a new board. The new board had no opportunity to look at it, ask questions, recognize it, or anything. I asked the young man to ask to table it, and let the new board have an opportunity to look at it. We don't have just no money to pay for their attorney and other things like that. So, out of, out of professional courtesy, you would think that you would never want to force an old agenda on a new board, and I think that's really, really not good business at all. Nobody on this new board had an opportunity to look at it, dissect it, or even analyze it. So, the new board members have seen it?
No, I think the history with you, with the trust, with the brain trust of the past board, we had an opportunity, we had an opportunity, and we thought long and hard on this here. And we thought long and hard on this, and trustee Williams and trustee Brooks and myself was part of an old board, and we passed this seven to zero.
Well, and, and I understand the vote, but I was informed by one of the trustees that voted on it that it was a misinterpretation on what it actually was. And, 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 trustee, it's, it's fine. I, I understand your passion and everything, but I don't think that the new board, a new board should be forced on anybody's agenda without them having interest, because we would have to leave one of them.
No, that's what they elected us to do, and within our rights, we voted on this seven to zero.
Okay.
Next question?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to ask the guy that's, he's here now for this.
Right there.
Nicholson, because I remember when this came across the board, and I asked the question, do we have to pay anything? And they told me no. But now I see that we got to come out of the village money and pay three thousand something dollars or something like this?
More than that.
More than that?
Can I ask that?
So, so if that wasn't true, I heard that we was paying this money out.
Trustee Pay, I mean, Madam Pay. Yes.
I ask you, Madam. The agreement, there's a section agreement specifically says here that no money is due by the village for this project at all, so every hundred percent of the project is paid by his organization. That's specifically in the, in the agreement.
And including the attorney?
His agreement said that he, he will furnish the attorneys.
And the village will pay for it?
No, he will pay for the attorneys. That is what the agreement said, and that's how it was interpreted at the time it was presented to the board. I don't know, there's a different legal interpretation now, but that's how it was interpreted at the time. But this is what I was against.
And, 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 Madam Pay, you specifically told me this definitely needs to be rescinded, because you were very uncomfortable with it.
When I stated...
That could be very... No, I'll finish with you, sir.
Trustee, all things, so...
Oh, my God.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
For clarity. So, and the point well taken from everybody who made a comment. So, I am new to the board, so I do need clarity on it. So, I want to, I want to say that first we have, we have here a product of University Park who's come back to the village to propose something that, to my knowledge, is something positive. The redevelopment agreement is to rehab the distress in abandoned homes. The project, from what I understand, line four of the agreement, has no cost to the village. Is that correct?
Correct.
The project could potentially ballpark figure, bring six hundred thousand plus tax dollars back to the tax roll. Is that correct?
A year.
A year, per year. So, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around why this is not a good idea, especially because, you know, I, I've paid attention to the board for, for, for many, many years, and there's, there's not, there hasn't been a lot of projects that has come to the board that doesn't, major projects that doesn't cost the board anything. So, I think this is something that we should consider. Now, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pros versus cons, and I, and all I'm seeing is pros. If there's no cost to the village at all, it beautifies the village. It could potentially put money back into the village tax roll, and this is a person that is born and raised and a product of the village. I don't see how I can support that.
You know what? And that's fine, trustee. I'd really like to see it in a workshop so I can get a good understanding on it, because this is the same project that happened down the street on Burnham.
Cityscape.
Cityscape.
So, you're saying we can table this now and for further discussion?
Yeah.
Just rescinding it from now?
No.
I said just make them open tables and have a workshop.
Mayor, can I be recognized?
You don't mind that.
Trustee, wait a minute, one second. Trustee Bowden still.
Okay. Yeah, so, Mayor, again, I had very clarity, very much clarity on this. That was one reason, and the same, actually, line item that trustee Franklin was questioning, that was that moment, that day, that I did question about the attorney, and it was answered to me. So, I did vote for it because the key thing was, and I think that everyone is becoming confused, is about the attorney, and that was we, correct me if I'm wrong, we can choose your attorney. Was that correct? Or was the group of attorneys that we can choose that was in that litigation or that contract? Or chief?
No.
Am I correct? So, as, as the resolution is written now, the individual can choose his attorney, okay? Before this matter came before the board, discussions would have, was had, and it was agreed, but the resolution was never amended, that the village attorney can be utilized, and that he, his, his firm would pay the village attorney to do the appropriate legislation. Right. That's correct. Right. And I mean, in all fairness, I, I do understand you, Mayor, if you come in and, and don't know, or you're asking out of respect, but look, there were things that needed to be done, and I mean, I'm just gonna be honest. There was a moment where, it's still on the internet, where you guys had to take care of business for the village, and I thank you for it, because you had to handle money, in which we don't even have to go there, because it's not on the agenda, but you guys took care of the business a couple of days before we were sworn in, and I think that should be respected, and that's the one thing I keep saying is that, Mayor, we're not gonna mislead you, the three trustees that are here, period. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, trustee.
I, I'd like to make a motion to workshop this. Because you're confused. The new, the new trustees are here, so let's sit down and get all of this together, because I'm still confused, because one person told me one thing, then I'm here another thing, so we can get it all clear.
Make a motion, trustee.
I made a motion.
Mr.?
To, to table this right now, can, 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 may I, may I?
Excuse me, may I be recognized, please?
One second, trustee. Madam Pay.
First, before we get into this legal process, you have an agreement that was passed by the board. We're workshopping something to move forward for further discussion, which still leaves open if this agreement is valid or not, and this will place us in a potential position of litigation. I'll just leave it at that. Also, also, just to be clear, the confusion with this, and I'll say this where everybody's sitting up here, the confusion with the situation is, this matter was passed on the day of the transition. In my opinion, it should have waited until the transition was done and brought to the new board. We all sat up here. We all sat up here and conversations debated, agenda items that was brought upon the board of the day of swearing in. That was my only opposition to this legislation that was passed. It should have waited, it could have waited one meeting until the new board was on. So Mr. Nicholson can provide his presentation to the new board and move forward. At this point, this legislation's been pending since May sixteenth. So the board needs to make a determination, either to go with it or not go with it. But the workshop, I just don't, I feel like it puts the village in further liability.
May I be recognized ma'am?
One second trustee, point well taken trustee. I mean, manager pay, that's all I'm asking for, is to look at it, not to have anything forced down. And I think that's respectful of all the parties, trustee, that called us.
Let me tell you, if we don't move forward on this right here, this perfectly, but we're gonna face, we're gonna face, we're gonna face legal problems with our village because by law, this is supposed to be assigned already. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, when we walked into this board, when we walked on this, walked into this village, Mr. Brooks and Mrs. Williams, we ran into two million dollars worth of lawsuits pending. So that's what we ran into. Now, if you wanna haggle and stonewall this, we're gonna find another lawsuit against us. We walked into two million dollars worth of lawsuits that we could have been avoiding, but it wasn't. And we didn't have the proper insurance to handle that lawsuit. All those lawsuits, we didn't have the proper insurance. So we had to pay that out of the general fund. So, now if you prolong this even more, I'm sure his attorneys are gonna sue the village for negligence. Because this is supposed to be done right now.
I've already sent a demand letter.
The letter's already out, so we're facing legal. Here we go again. So what I'm saying, we are, we are facing other legal ramifications for not signing this.
Trustee.
What is, what is wrong with our, what was wrong, what was wrong with it? We passed it. We passed it.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Trustee.
I am a new incoming trustee here in University Park. On the day that it was a swearing in, the room was packed out. We couldn't hear anything that was going on during the meeting or what was being passed or what was being said. I don't have a relationship with Mr. Nichols and anyone that knows me knows that I am passionate about beautification of this village. Now, my thing is, is anything that is going to bring something good to our village, we would support, but we need to have the opportunity to hear what the other members of this board have been privy to. So, I am asking Mr. Nichols, I understand that it could be pending litigation, but I'm asking Mr. Nichols to reach out to the new trustees and do a workshop that's made privately or one-on-one so we can be brought up to speed.
May I be recognized please? Trustee, we went through all of this beforehand, before your time here on the board. And trust me, with Williams, she signed, okay. It doesn't matter, it's signed into law, you're trying to break the law right there? Trying to break it? You are in violation right now for not signing it, you're in violation. That puts us, that puts us in another, that puts us in another, that puts us in another quandary when it comes to.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Soon. Now you're gonna potentially put us in legal jeopardy again, once again. Because fourteen, fourteen, fourteen days after it was signed, it was supposed to be signed by you.
Mayor, may I be recognized please?
Now, if you refuse to sign it, therefore it's gonna put us in a legal quandary again. I told you, we came into this village with two million dollars that Brooks and I did not, or Williams did not cause. But that's what we was gifted. So now, you're trying to create another legal, another problem?
Unfortunately, I haven't seen the redevelopment agreement. We have signed, my understanding is no agreements have been signed. There's a resolution authorizing his signature, but to my knowledge, nobody's signed anything as of now. I think what is being suggested is that the new board have an opportunity to review it. And if everything that's said is true, then following the meeting, they could still sign it. But again, I haven't seen the resolution.
Counsel, are we in legal jeopardy right now for not signing?
To my knowledge, we are not.
So why is his attorney getting ready to sue?
I have no idea. I haven't talked to his attorney and I have no idea.
Because the paper is already in.
May I be recognized?
Yes, trustee Ayman, Nicholson, I'm actually expecting it, please. Just a second, just a second.
Mr. Nicholson, I wanna ask a question. Were you part of the development over on, I think it's next to Menasindo, Cityscape? Were you part of that development?
One, two, one, two?
Yeah.
Good. Your question is, you was asking, was I a part of the development of Cityscape?
Yes.
All right, let me give you a little bit of history about myself, all right? So, some of you all know me. I'm gonna ask you a question.
Yes or no?
Ma'am, let me ask you a question.
I'm asking yes or no.
Ma'am, let me ask you a question. Can I ask you a question?
Answer, yes or no?
Can I ask you a question please?
Yes, yes sir.
All right. Now, I'm from University Park.
I've heard that, I just need a yes or no answer, that's it. We can do a workshop at a later date, we can discuss this in the sidebar, but I need a yes or no answer, that's all.
Was I a part of it, yes, I was.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Trustee, all right, but that, hold on, wait a minute, I mean, Mr. Nicholson, can you please give it a five minutes, will you? Just a moment, the public session is over, this isn't gonna go back and forth with the board. We're asking for a workshop, if the board grants that, then you'll have the opportunity to move forward. So there's a motion and a second on the table.
May I be, a motion for what?
For workshop, to take it for workshop. To the first meeting of the council. There was a motion, a motion by trustee Williams and a second by trustee to move this to the council for a workshop. It's a workshop trustee.
Question, what if, if the motion doesn't pass, then what happens with the project? I asked, what if the motion doesn't pass, then what happens to the project? And the response was, then you just have a resolution hanging out there.
No, project. Table it or not?
So, Mrs. Morgan, please, please.
Thank you.
Wait on trustee Williams? Question? Wait on Williams.
So we table it to a workshop, we're gonna give her an opportunity to present.
That's all I'm asking.
The property to us.
What's, I have a question. It's already, it's already been passed, so.
We got, we got action on the board, there shouldn't be no conversation back and forth. Roll call, madam clerk.
May I be recognized?
We got, please? Not the women on the roll call trustee.
Mayor, may I be recognized please?
This was done before. Trustee, we're in the roll call, because we want clarity. Trustee Williams.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Votes no.
Trustee Bell.
Votes aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Votes no.
Trustee Bolton.
Votes no.
Trustee McMuller.
Votes no.
Votes aye to take it for workshop. For table fees.
They won, they won.
Now, now, now there's a motion, the original motion is to rescind the resolution. Roll call, madam clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Votes aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Votes no.
Trustee Bell.
Votes aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Votes no.
Trustee Bolton.
Votes no.
Trustee McMuller.
You know it's a no.
Votes aye.
They got a sign?
Item F two G, bills payable? You make a threats, ma'am? This is the revised bills payable. Nothing has changed, general fund, two hundred forty-four thousand, oh seven nine eighty-six. Road and bridge, two thousand seven oh two, sixty-seven town, center fund, two thousand five seventy-two seventy-one. And the payroll fund, four thousand three oh eight two, three, four thousand three hundred eighty-seven seven, a total of two hundred fifty-three thousand, six sixty-four and one cent. Here's their motion.
So, what was the question?
The, uh. You make a second first, oh sorry.
Second.
Move by trustee, second by trustee Bolton, question by trustee Franklin.
The four, four, seven, seven, the Aqua bill for slightly over thirty-one hundred, is that still something we have to pay?
Yes, those are past due payments, those are past due payments prior to the issue.
Thank you sir.
Question, mayor?
Trustee Brooks.
Um, I'm looking at the old one. I'm trying to find the new check number, I'll just say the name. Clark Environmental, the mosquito service. Um, but the check I have is one oh three, eight oh five. When did they start spraying?
Trustee, we prepaid, we prepaid for mosquito services. Myself and the mayor met with the mosquito provider, service provider. They're scheduled to start spraying, they would have sprayed earlier, but due to the wet weather, they were limited in what they were able to spray, they were able to treat water, but they're actually out able to spray. So, once the weather has changed, now they'll be able to come out and actually spray as appropriate.
Okay, and how soon, because the reason why I ask is that behind the resident on Old Forge Lane, there's seniors, there's a swell back there, I'm sending you an email about that water, and I'm quite sure mosquitoes are just sitting all back there and actually it comes from Farm View and it's running all the way down, so.
I would ask, I would have to ask director buyer to contact Clark because with the weather has been temperamental, I don't know if they've been out already or they're scheduled to come out.
They're scheduled to come out.
Okay.
You don't know when though?
No.
Okay, because. Because if I'm mistaken, the mayor's even been over there, Old Forge Lane. It's like a creek now. And trustee Bell knows too, it's a cree do, but it's almost like a creek, so we need to take care of that like ASAP and that little fly up in the code, I see them, they fly in the code aside. Mr. Don knows, they fly in and fly out, but they, they gonna need to do some work on that south end.
Any special request to see if they can do extra treatment?
Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Votes aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Votes aye to pay the bills.
Trustee Bell.
Votes aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Votes aye.
Trustee Bolton.
Votes aye.
The mayor protest.
I concur. Reporter, the mayor, board of trustees, village clerk, manager, appointed officials, committees and commissions. I'll give my update on the recon, on the recon convention in Las Vegas regarding economic development. Very quick, it's a very good conference, it's an opportunity to sit down one-on-one with developers and business people to have an opportunity to show them what's available in the village. We talk about site locations, we talk about qualifications, flow of traffic, traffic patterns. So I had the opportunity to attend the class, investing in real properties and structuring partnerships, how you draft your lease, you can make money, redevelopment at your center, tenant mixers and leasing structures, our retailers are winning, cannabis retail revolution, only as close as you think, how municipalities can take advantage of the booming market. And we also, and this is trustee Williams and I both, we were both at the conference. And also we did the self-driving, the repurposed revitalized, the redeveloped shopping centers, self-driving revolution on how to turn a dilapidated mall into an enterprise opportunity for the community. We met with the Wendy's hamburger group regarding that, Tommy's car wash, the Kroger company, Subway real estate, Tango factory outlet centers, Smoothie King, Sonic Drive-In, Sonic's car wash factory, select, and also we were a member of the South suburban group, the Chicago Southland group, and we hosted a booth for other people to come in, we worked with Cal Park and Lansing and a couple other municipalities. We worked on retail strategies and retail specialists, Quake, White Car Wash, Planned Grocery, Orange Therapy Fitness, which is something like Planet Fitness, McDonald's USA Development Corporation, trustee Williams, Verizon Wireless, Valvoline, the oil change company, Wells Fargo, WLS Lighting System, the Obama Light Project, Wyndham Hotels and Resorts. And where this process goes, once you acquire all site information and the requirements, we continuously communicate with them, let them know what our opportunity and enterprise zones are, our TIF areas, and we continuously change information and we encourage them to come on into our community, take a look around. They're looking at our populations, our rooftop, they're looking at the university, our feasibility study, ITOD study around the metro station, around I fifty-seven interchange. So that's the report from recon and there's still ongoing conversation with some select perverse vendors that will eventually come into the community if the incentives are right to move the community. So that's the report from recon, and there's still ongoing conversations with some select perverse vendors that will eventually come into the community if the incentives are right to move the community forward. That's my report on the recon, and that covers trustee Williams and I, because we were both in attendance, and trustee Williams was distant at everyone that we sat down with, and including the courses. That would be my report regarding that, the recon convention.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something on my report right now?
Oh, yes, trustee McMullin.
I need, uh, some clarification on this invoice that was just put in front of me earlier today, and it's in front of everybody here. Please, uh, give me a clarification on this invoice.
Excuse me, just for clarification, this is part of your report?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Uh, can you give me some sort of clarity on this invoice here that we received for the village to spill, for the village for seventeen thousand dollars?
So, uh, that was an invoice received yesterday in regards to landscaping services that was provided, um, over a three-day period of time, uh, to cover all the village's properties, uh, as well as some additional services. When we looked at the initial proposal, this dollar amount was never written on this proposal, nor was the manpower requirement not taken on this proposal. Um, I'm bringing this to everybody's attention, because we have a four thousand dollar bill on bills payable in regards to lawn dog, lawn services, in regards to them maintaining our lawn services. So, board members had a question of why we were paying lawn dogs, and, and, and as well as in regards to his incoming invoice for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for three days of, uh, lawn care services and various other services that took place. So, I wanted to, uh, provide the example of what we pay typically on a monthly basis, uh, for lawn care services in the village since the last year compared to a seventeen thousand seven hundred bill we received for three days of services. That unfortunately, um, will have to be on the next bill's payable, and the board would have to approve. I cannot approve this payment because it's over my five thousand dollar approval threshold, so I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention, uh, because we are paying lawn dogs to continue services. We did attempt to contact this service and negotiate this price down, uh, and they refused to do so. Uh, they sent a proposal to do continuing services, um, just as lawn dogs are doing. Lawn dogs cuts, cuts grass, uh, four times a month. This service is two times only, and they may come out a third time if requested. Uh, and they, and their price, uh, they were able to match lawn dogs at four thousand dollars, but that's at two times a month compared to four times a month with a possible third time service. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, and I know with the fiscal constraints that the villages run now, also, uh, our average budget for lawn care services is twenty thousand five hundred dollars. This will well place us over budget, uh, for that specific line item, especially in the budget discussions, so I just wanted to clarify that before it's questioned by the board.
The clarity that I have here, yearly, our service is twenty-one thousand dollars a year, so three days of service, you're gonna spend seventeen thousand for three days of service for our village, and it normally costs twenty-one thousand for the year, for the season. And as we get seventeen thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money for three days of lawn service. Now, I'm gonna tell you this, Mr. Darrell, do we have anything in our budget that will accommodate three days of work for seventeen thousand dollars? Is this the White House or what?
Really?
Where are we?
Okay, now, so yearly is about twenty-one hundred dollars, I mean twenty-one thousand dollars a year, and three days of service is seventeen thousand, we get an invoice for seventeen thousand? Unreal, this is unreal. I am a steward of everybody's money in this village.
All right.
My partner and I was elected here, and I will not advocate seventeen thousand for three days of work. What are they doing? What, what, what can we do? Why do we have to have an outside service, seventeen thousand for three days, and we have a total season for twenty-one thousand? I am totally blown away, and I cannot sleep at night knowing that, uh, the village is paying seventeen thousand for three days of work, are you serious?
Trusty McMullin, just for the record, we, we've been requesting invoices from this company for the last two weeks. And ironically, it came in the mail yesterday, a day before the board meeting, so we were not able to get it on this bills payable. And I know with lawn dogs being on the bills payable today, I just wanted to make sure we had clarification, uh, on that question. And I know we're about to go into, uh, a retreat in the next week discussing the budget, and when this is input, it's gonna place that line item well over budget, and I do not want, uh, the public works department to be penalized for that, so I just wanted to kind of go over that.
Okay, I am just totally blown away by this here, uh, we're gonna have to talk about this seriously, because seventeen thousand for three days of work is absolutely absurd. Your beauty boy, our, our village is already beautified, but seventeen thousand for three days, unacceptable. That is my comment. Twenty-one thousand for a season, for seventeen thousand for three days? No, not here. The buck stops with me, right here.
I, I would like to make a comment, comment on that as well. I worked for a landscaping company, own, for your own, a landscaping company for over ten years in downtown Chicago, and we, for three days, did you say?
Three days.
We didn't, we never built anyone, we worked for, I, one of our customers was the city of Chicago. I'm sorry? Exactly, yeah.
A hundred dollars.
One of our major customers was, uh, city of Chicago, and we would never build city of Chicago, and we planted trees and everything for three days. This is totally unacceptable, has it, who approved this? And this is just too much, plus we already have a landscaper in, that's doing this. I mean, they could have gotten around eventually to cleaning up all these areas, but this is totally unacceptable. I had Blue Cross Blue Shield, all of them as customers, and never do I build this much, unacceptable. And I had three or four men out there working all day for eight hours, and it never, nothing like this, thank you.
On a positive note, I would like to say that the way that I've seen our community come together during this crisis has given me chills. To see the room full on Saturday helped me to understand how powerful of a community we can be if we decided that we want to come together and control our own destiny. Chills. I've been on the grounds delivering water these past couple of days until my arms, couldn't lift my arms no more. I was out there today, eighty degrees, on the truck delivering water, it's the type of person I am. And as I talk to residents, chills, they're thankful, we all in it together, that's the vibe, that together we can do it, that's the feeling that I'm getting in the community. And it helps me to understand how powerful of a community we can really be if we just decided that we're gonna come together, be self-sufficient, and control our own destiny. So I prayed about the water crisis, and I really believe it's a blessing in disguise, because I think there's something very positive that's gonna come out of it. People are coming together, we meeting people, we meeting neighbors, and everybody has the same concern, but the bigger thing is everybody has a common goal. And this common goal is to, is, is, is to not only end the crisis, but to move the village forward in the right direction, so it's just a powerful thing that I believe God is doing for us in a weird way, but they say he works in mysterious ways. I'm excited to announce that July first, uh, this will be the eighth year that I'm hosting the Lionheart Strength and Conditioning Camp for the kids in the community. This strength and conditioning camp is for keep children ages four to fifteen, and it's free. It's at Palmer Park from five thirty to seven thirty, it runs for two consecutive weeks, with July fourth being off, and then on the last Friday, we barbecue and we have some fun with the kids. It's not only designed for football and cheerleaders, it's designed to get your kids off the couch playing video games. It's designed to, uh, as a campaign against obesity, it's designed to teach kids about hard work and how it pays off, and it's free. So, Lionheart Strength and Conditioning Camp for children, boys and girls, ages four to fourteen to fifteen, at any age really, could come out, it doesn't matter, any age, it's open to anybody, any children in the village. And it's an awesome opportunity. Um, my, and in closing, I want to continue to challenge the man in the community. We have to step up. We have a responsibility, and we have to step up, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. I saw y'all doing that truck, man.
During, um, during this week, uh, it has been, uh, you know, our new trustee, we've been in, I think, about thirty-nine, I think it's like thirty-nine days now, we've been faced with a lot. But the community has been extremely, extremely supportive with everything that we've been going through, we've united, we've come together, and we're moving the village forward. Um, as far as the seventeen thousand dollar bill, um, I, I, I would say this, you get what you pay for. When I look at the community and I look at how well it is starting to look, and the neighbors are happy, and they're grateful and they're thankful, because our public works department is understaffed, and whoever came in and, and if the village manager approved this, it has been a blessing to the community. We've lost so much, we've lost our public works department, we've lost our social services department, and to have our community come back being clean and looking as if it want, if, if we're moving in the right direction is a blessing, and it's something that I'm grateful for public works doing. Also, I would like to thank all of the residents that came out on Saturday to support Aqua and show them that we will hold their feet to the fire, and we've been showing them that they will be accountable for what they've done to this village. And in closing, just God bless everyone, and please get your, your blood levels tested, so we'll know where we stand and make sure we put our health first, thank you.
I guess I'm, okay, I was waiting for the clearance, don't, don't wanna be in trouble, no, I'm just kidding. And, and let me just comment on that right quick, uh, everyone, you know, as passionate as we are up here, we have, it's a flower right here. It won't move? Oh, there you go. All right, must be that grease. Okay, let me start over again, uh, everyone, I just want to say that, uh, as passionate as we are up here on this board, uh, we all want to see the village move forward. And I will say that, uh, uh, even though you may see an exchange like you see today, it does not mean anything negative for this village, it means that it's just good collaboration. You don't want no one to sit up here and agree with every single thing that happens, I'm telling you now, if you, if you see that, something's wrong, that's all I'm gonna say. Uh, and, and by the way, I want to say for the mayor, and I wanted to say this on the day he was sworn in, but it was his time, the same way he respected when it was my time, is that I know Mayor Rudez and the first lady and their family. My wife and I have been to his fiftieth birthday party, we know him, they're good people, they're good family, so there would never be any hatred towards the mayor. The mayor, and trust me, when this is over with, the mayor will walk right up and we'll talk, and it won't even be about tonight, it'd be about something else. So, let's make that clear right now in unification of this village. Next, also, I would like to thank the mayor, because the mayor did call myself, trustee McMullin, and trustee, uh, uh, Bell, I try to get that double name, Jenkins Bell. Yeah, we gotta get used to it, um, trustee, we, we, the three of us did do the press conference with Channel Seven, and then afterwards too. Something that, that stuck with me is the first lady, when it was over with, the first lady spoke to me a good five minutes, uh, if not longer, and it was very, uh, uh, a role of a first lady. She would like to see all of us get along, and not only that, but she, I know she's like, Theo, stop, that's, see, because she telling Karen, stop it. She probably reached by, oh, you gave my husband the mic, that's the danger, first lady, I warned your husband. But she did say one thing, is that she wanted, she believes that all of us can move this village forward, and I do believe we can. So there's gonna be passionate moments up here where there would be disagreements, disagreements. Let's go back to July of twenty seventeen, we had a big fight about that, I can't say none because of legal purposes, but nonetheless, I was very passionate about saying, look, this is what we believe, we tried, it didn't work, it's time to move on, when it came to having a village manager. So, those things happen, it doesn't mean that the mayor then didn't hate me, and the mayor now won't hate me, but people in the community, let me say something. I don't pay attention to that fake TV show, that commentary website, I'm just telling you now, it don't bother me, I'm gonna tell you why. I done had my life threatened before, so you don't know what it feel like to be a police officer and you constantly locking somebody up because of warrants, period. And I tell you what, I ain't scared, because one thing, my brother talked to one of them today, nothing better not happen to Theo Brooks. That's what they said. So, uh, it doesn't bother me, but I'm here to serve you, um, Fourth of July. Uh, I hope we got officers ready for that day, uh, deputy chief Wilson has been ready, let's be patient, some people are gonna try to shoot our fireworks, but let's be patient, they're not gunshots. Uh, football season has started, uh, that's why I'm a little worn out, today was our first day of, uh, true football summer weather, myself and coach Franklin, that's why we looking red, is because that heat, and we got a whole week to go, so, my time is up. So, everyone, thank you, enjoy your Fourth of July.
Trusty Williams?
I'll have to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I think this village is starting to move, move forward, we going places, we doing things, we bringing things here. I did go to recon, uh, Gina, and like, uh, Mayor Rudez extended, we were together, we did all these things with different companies. They was appreciated, and a lot of them gonna come here and look at this land that we have and see what they'd like to build here, so that was a positive outcome. Also, I feel the positive outcome was with Aqua, taking the time, telling us what's wrong, being responsible, telling us, being responsible. I repeat that because you see him every day that out here, they trying to, you know, to help us, and though what's done is done, if we had lead in our body, we're gonna have to have help, our kids, everybody. So, don't push it to the side, get your blood checked, and make, you know, things that you have to do happen, that's all I have to say.
Manager, they don't have anything.
Nobody has any reports? Okay. First, uh, mayor, board, residents, um, this, two weeks has been a trying two weeks, I think, uh, everybody up here, including myself, and dealing with, um, this whole issue with lead in the water and various different things like that. Lot of priorities had to be shifted and refocused, and, and kind of all hands on deck, kind of dealing with Zaco situation. I would personally say, um, I am everybody's village manager. Um, I've, I made that statement multiple times, uh, post May sixteenth and pre-May sixteenth, and I'll continue to say that. Uh, I continue to provide the best services possible for this board and Mayor Rudez. Um, I'm all about transparency and doing things proper, I understand everybody has their methodology of doing things, there's right way and wrong way of doing things, and that's all I'm about addressing. Um, Mayor Rudez gave me some advice, maybe his fourth day in office, came to my office and we had a heated conversation in regards to procedural stuff, and, uh, he made a statement that really, really rang true to me. He said, manager pay, let me be the mayor and stick with legislation, you be the manager and you deal with operations, and if you have a problem and has something to do with legislation, you come to me, and I'll go to my trustees and we'll deal with it. So in saying that, as trustee Brooks says, you may see differences of opinions in this board, uh, you may see passionate thought processes here. Uh, I'm not one to sit here and shy away on my position on anything, as the mayor said, I did speak on the rescinding of Indy Financial. My, my speech on it was, uh, and, and as people that were involved in this conversation prior to. prior to the swearing in in May 16th, that was un, I felt that was untimely to present this piece of legislation for passage when you have a new board swearing in. And they have not been indoctrinated, nor orientated on the facts of the document. If the deal is good on May 15th, the deal is good on May 17th. That's my position on it. Uh, as far as the village and beautification goes, the village does look great. And, and, and there is a great beautification effort out there. But we have to be physically responsible as well. When we initially look at vendors, we look at vendors to come in and do a good, good work for the village, and that's what we expect. And I'm not discounting the good work that this landscaper did for the village. What I'm stating is, uh, we don't have the budget to sustain such great costs. And please understand that my office, as well as the Department of Public Works, as well as, uh, trustee Jenkins Bell, spoke to this company on multiple occasions, attempting them to lower their price or try to con, accommodate to the village. And unfortunately, that's, we didn't, we didn't meet that goal. Okay? $17,700 a lot for three days. They need, did not highlight clearly in their proposal what they were gonna be doing, how many employees they would be staffed. The lie of that wasn't clarified. When you look at the proposal, it doesn't say estimated cost seventeen, fi, $17,700. They provide the hourly rate, that's all it does. Director Byder, on multiple occasions, while they were working, asked them, where are we at on billing? What is the status? How much have we spent? There was no response. After the work was done, we called every day, no bill. A week and a half later, we get a phone call, the bill is $17,700. Well, what was the methodology on that? Well, we had five guys out here working, three days at twelve hours a day, and they had to cover fuel costs and various different things, and they bought new machinery to work out here and various different things like that. Well, that was not, was delineated to myself and the director, that they would need to purchase new machinery or the cost of fuel and various other things like that. And I understand, we're a municipal organization, everybody believes the government has big pockets of their bill comes across, they say, okay, the bill is gonna be paid. That's just how it is. We run into this all the time, you know? Um, I hold no fault to anyone here, I think it's a learning process. You know, I think it was a great learning process for Director Byder and myself and even members of the board, and as well as communicating with the mayor about it. In dealing with Aqua, I want to make it very clear, and I thank Ms. Deborah Stroud for her contributions, but there are staff members that work for me that have went above and beyond to obtain water donations outside, above, above and beyond the Northern Food Bank. And even at that point, Ms. Jenkins received initial communication from the food bank. And they requested information on our emergency declaration, and we provided that information. She was notified the water delivery, Ms. Stroud was notified as well. So, thank you, Ms. Stroud, and thank you, Niva Jenkins. What I think and what I see that we fail in all the time is, we don't acknowledge everybody. We acknowledge one group here, one group there, on a day of the week. This week, I'm, I'm, I'm the village manager, next week I may not be. You know, it, 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 it's very temperamental here. And I just think in order for the village to move forward, we all have to be very upfront and very open about, you know, everybody's contribution. Because what I don't want, dealing with my operations staff there, is have my staff be discouraged as if they don't do anything or as, as if they don't contribute anything to this village, 'cause they do. Ms. Jenkins contacted Jewel, provided a copy of emergency declaration. Jewel said, you know what? Who provided a couple pallets? And the lady called Niva back and said, you know what? Let me send this emergency declaration to our corporate office. Jewel's has dedicated five pallets of water a week until this matter is resolved. So, there are other things happening here. The mayor came to my office yesterday. He said, "Manager Pay, we getting a lot of water." He said, "Have you thought about our residents being afraid to wash their dishes? Let's request cufflery. Let's request, uh, forks and knives and spoons. Let's replace, request paper plates and bowls." So, we've expanded our effort to request those things as well. So, we are working very hard and diligently in getting this done, and I think that's very important. And, and, and share the same sentiments, like I said, trustee Brooks. We all may not get along every day, and there's never gonna be one day that I'm gonna get along with all seven people sitting up here in one day. Everybody up here will be upset with me at one time during any day next week, okay? Uh, it's not my job to make seven people happy, my, it's my, it's my job to do my job. And if my opinion is, my opinions, and we can agree to disagree, and we move on. And that's what I appreciate, uh, about this board. We can agree, disagree, move on, and, uh, kind of be open. And I appreciate the mayor and respecting the form of government and allowing me to make, make the decisions that I make. The mayor never comes to, has never came to me and stated, "I want you to do this." He would ask a question, "Well, what's your opinion on this subject, or what do you think about this?" And so, it start, it sparks off conversation, and suggestions go back and forth in decisions I made. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate the trustees, new trustees asking questions. I appreciate my staff and being diligent in transition, 'cause as everybody knows, transitioning mayors is a very stressful situation for anybody that's in an appointed position or any employee for this village, historically. So, moving forward, I thank everybody, and I think we're moving in a great direction. I think this Aqua water test has been a test of everybody's faith up here, and I think we're all standing and moving, and I think we all haven't disagreed. One thing, when it came, when it comes to Aqua, nobody up here is disagreed or had a different opinion about Aqua, their responsibility was to happen. And I think if we can stick in, stick to that direction, we're all things we work on, and I think the village will be in a much better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Pay. And you know what? I just want, want you one quick statement, let's get up out of here. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. And for those who are not in attendance at our special board meeting on Saturday morning, let me just say a few brief words. Since this water crisis began, it has been a challenge for all of us living here. My home is included in the Do Not Consume Alert as well, so I understand how the residents feel. I want to assure everyone that my administration and I have been working closely with Aqua every day regarding this water crisis. The trustees and I are being kept informed so we can pass information along to our friends and neighbors. On Saturday, the president of Aqua, along with many other individuals, came here to discuss how we arrived at this crisis and what is being done to resolve it as quickly as possible. The village board took hours of testimony and questions from all, from residents, do all we can to get them answers to alleviate their frustration and anxiety about the situation. There are several things I have asked the company on behalf of the residents. We asked them to be vigilant in getting water to everyone affected. We asked them to get filters to all those affected. We asked them for an information center here from nine to nine to give our residents firsthand and up-to-date information. We have requested that they provide residents with lead testing kits, smart alerts. We have asked them to hire a minority firm independent of their vendors to test the water and compare our results with theirs. We have asked them to test the village facilities, which have been cleared so those facilities, including our water tanks, are no longer part of the Do Not Consume Advisory. We have asked for and are being provided with daily updates. We have asked that they allow village representatives to participate in discussions with the IEPA and ICC. With passage and approval of the emergency declaration, staff is in contact with the Wildlife and Health Department to see if they can offer assistance as prepared to seek assistance from other state and federal agencies if necessary. The company is working hard to meet the request of our residents, so I encourage everyone to continue to contact the company and utilize the information center to get what you need. This is no time for politics. We are one family, one community, and our main focus has to be the health, welfare, and safety of our residents. This is a time to unite our community and help and assist all of our neighbors. Your elected officials are speaking in one voice because we understand the importance of this issue. I want to thank the trustees, our clerk, and the entire administration for their help and support. Moving forward, I want to ask everyone to please do all we can to help one another. I pray that this will be some, over very soon. Until then, we need to remember that University Park is still a great place to live and to raise our families. I do not want our community defined by others. This is our home, our village, and we will define our own destiny. If there's anything any of your elected officials can do to get more information to residents or do more to help, please let us know. Thank you so much for your time. Does that motion for a German?
So, who?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.